Okay, good afternoon. It is afternoon. Thank you Vice Chair Beckias and everyone for being here. And welcome to the Community Health Endowment Director and Staff and Board Members. And I also want to say thank you for your forbearance in the change of schedules. And we're glad you're back. And we're grateful to have you here today. I'm Tammy Ward, Chair of the Council. And to my left is Vice Chair Tom Beckias. And to my right is Councilman Benny Schob and our newest member, Michelle Suarez, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Sandra Washington and Councilman Richard McGinnis, as you all know, all of us. And arriving a little later will be Councilman James Michael Bowers. So with that, Lori Seibel, do you want to kick us off or tell us how this is going to work? Okay, whoops. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and give you an update on the endowment. We value very much our relationship with the city and we appreciate the fact that you are interested in hearing how the endowment is doing. And we're happy to tell you. But I'd like to introduce our Board Chair. Many of you, probably all of you, know Marilyn Moore.
We do. Welcome.
Thank you.
Marilyn is everywhere. We're glad to have you, Marilyn.
Well, I am glad to be here, honored to be here. And in fact, it was not very many years ago I was standing before you hoping that you would vote to approve my nomination to this board. So thank you for doing that. As is always true, when you serve in any aspect of our community, you learn so much. And I have learned so much. One of the things that's been really interesting to me about the Community Health Endowment is what an absolute benefit it is to the city to have a designated amount of money for the sole purpose of making Lincoln the healthiest city in the country. And I'm also astonished at how few people know about it. I was in a conversation the other night with a person who I consider to be very well-informed, has lived in Lincoln 18 years and had never heard of the Community Health Endowment. So he got my elevator speech about the Community Health Endowment. And I was really glad to be able to share that with him. So it's my privilege today as Chair of the Board to kind of set us off to a good start and then turn it over to other Board members who will fill in much more in the way of details. So we're doing our annual State of the Endowment. And we'll talk a little bit about money. And we'll talk a little bit about how that money is used and the impact it has on our community. So to start with, here we are. We have a set of Board members and we have staff. And Lori, I think, is maneuvering the PowerPoint.
I'm not sure the folks behind the scenes are... There they are.
There it is. Right, there we have it. So this is a list of us. You can see the persons who are presently serving as officers. And I'm the Chair. Russ Gronewald is the Vice Chair. Eric Buchanan is Secretary. And John Thompson is Treasurer. And they are all here today and will be speaking with you about different issues related to their work. You can see the rest of us listed. We do have a requirement in our bylaws that we have a number of people who are health professionals or who are in the health community. And that certainly informs our work. And that's a really good provision. The CEOs of both Bryan Health and CHI St. Elizabeth are on our Board. So that gives us that system work. The Director of Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department is a member of the Board and gives us that really wonderful, on-the-ground look of what's happening in public health. And then we have three physicians, Dr. Michelle Peterson, Dr. Steve Ferriss, and Dr. John Reinhardt, who's a dentist, who gives really good insights into that dental health is a huge part of health. And his expertise is also particularly helpful to us. We have four staff members. Since we last reported to you, we have added the position of Equity and Diversity Officer. And Selena Martinez fills that role. Right now, that's on a part-time basis. And she is just helping us be sure that we always keep that lens in front of us as we have conversations and as we make decisions. I also believe that since the last time we met, probably Emily and Morgan are new to you because we had retirements that happened all at once. So Emily is the Grant Community Relations Officer. And Morgan is the Administrative Officer who takes care of a gazillion details and also keeps that lens in front of our work. We do a lot as Board members to try to make wise decisions and to try to be in touch with what's happening in the community and what happens as a result of the grants that we make. So we make site visits throughout the year. We were just at the Malone Center last week. In fact, I'm learning about and getting an update on their maternal wellness program, which I have to say is one of the most promising things that I've had the opportunity to learn about in quite some time. I'm really looking forward to what we learn over the course of three years. The first six months are very promising. But this wonderful collage of site visits shows us at various places. You can see the name Belmont Community Center. We have a project there. We are at the Barnabas Site, the Barnabas House Above Free Distribution Site in the Belmont community. We were at EduQuest or EduCare checking out their new playground equipment that we helped fund. We had a lot of fun watching the kids have a lot of fun on that one. That was just great. We visited Lincoln Literacy recently for an update there. And then we've just been in places all over the community. And Board members make an effort to get to as many of these as we can because it really helps us see things in action. The impact of the Community Health Endowment is hard to measure in many ways, but there are some very concrete things that we can do. And one is that we can show you what's happened with the money. So you will see on this circle graph that the original balance that CHE started with 25 years ago was $37.8 million. There has been an inflation adjustment during that time of $23.7 million. And in that same time, we have granted $38 million in grants back to the community. 454 grants since 2000, which is an astonishing impact on a community. Some of them are relatively small. As an example, there's a childcare center in Lakeview that, in the Lakeview neighborhood, that struggled, as did most during COVID time. And they were at the point where they needed an infusion of cash of $15,000 to keep their doors open and serve the children and families they were serving to get them through the next six months. And we made a $15,000 grant that assured that those children had reliable, consistent, and uninterrupted childcare. And during that time, they reworked their marketing plan, they reworked everything, they enrolled enough children that they're now doing fine. But that $15,000 got them over the hump. And then other grants have been much, much larger. If you've seen the Lincoln Fresh Truck from the food bank driving around the community, that was a legacy project of the Community Health Endowment. The new building in West Lincoln that houses Morning Hope and services by Lutheran Family Services, that was a Community Health Endowment legacy project. It's also right next to a park, which is right next to some community crops gardens, which is right next to a city rec center or a neighborhood rec center. And it all pulls together in a site that serves a neighborhood that sometimes feels like the rest of the community has forgotten it. So from very small grants to very large grants and grants all along the continuum between 454 grants over 23 years and $38 million has been invested into this community to help make Lincoln the healthiest community in the nation. It's a really, it's an honor to serve in that role and to serve that mission and that purpose. So next, we're going to talk about funding priorities. And Dr. Michelle Peterson, who is the Chair of our Funding Committee, would normally do that. And she's not able to be here today, so I think Lori's going to pick that.
I'll try to serve in her stead best I can. I just wanted to mention what our current funding priorities are. First trimester prenatal care. We know that prenatal care among low-income and minority women falls especially among our goal of 90%. And of course, many of you are familiar with our mapping. And we can look to see exactly what neighborhoods where that problem exists and can target those efforts. And so we're hoping to work with folks in that area. Healthy food access, we just really believe this serves as a foundational issue for many folks in our community. And it's not just filling someone's stomach. It's filling someone's stomach with something healthy. We really believe that that prevents so many other things down the road. And so we're happy to have that as a funding focus as well. Youth fitness, especially after COVID, we know that this is a particularly difficult issue to address. We're working in a number of areas. But again, our mapping helps us look to exactly where we need to be focusing that attention. And then lastly, mental wellness and human connection, regaining much of what was lost during the pandemic. And we know the recent survey by the Health Department also identified this as the top health concern. So we align our priorities with other community priorities as well. I just wanted to give you a snapshot of a couple of projects that you may find interesting and perhaps don't know that we have funded. During COVID, we funded the Dreamweaver Foundation to help our seniors. I know, Tammy, this might be especially interesting to you, to have grand pads. Essentially, they are pads that allow people to connect with other people. And so we funded those in three languages among low-income seniors. We also are very proud of a project we've been working with Lincoln Literacy and the Bryan College of Health Sciences to help immigrants and refugees who are interested in become certified nursing assistants. And that, of course, is, we have a tremendous lack of those in our community. And also having nursing staff, which matches some of our growing diversity, putting those folks back into the, perhaps, the area of work of which, from the country from which they've come. And so being able for them to go back to work in healthcare, we're very appreciative of Lincoln Literacy not only offering them prep courses to get into certified nursing assistance, but the Bryan College then accepting them as students at their college. We're working in Belmont. I know this may be of interest to some of you as well, on a strategic plan and working on that area to how we can create some really collaborative neighborhood initiatives to strengthen that important neighborhood. And then also working in the area of behavioral health with employment supports, helping people who are recovering from mental illness being able to go back to work. So that's an example of some recent projects that we funded. We're also proud of a project that we're working on at the Malone Community Center. It's called Malone Community Sports. It's, right now, so far, 281 youth have been served in their athletic programs, basketball, track, football, and volleyball. And I know they're doing some other ones. And 97% of those kids identify as Black or BIPOC in some form. And so whenever I get a picture of the teams that are now happening because of those programs, I get really excited because I think, yes, it's sports, but it's also character development, it's also teamwork, it's also learning work ethic, it's also really, in many ways, the reason why a lot of kids want to go to school. So it helps kids stay in school. And we're just completing another project with Lincoln Public Schools on the status of youth sports in the community. And we just met with them this morning and looking forward to sharing some of the recommendations that came out of that project as well. Oh, yes, I had to put in, they were only sending me pictures of boys, so I said, "You got to send me pictures of girls." I think one of the projects that you're familiar with is the Air Park Community Center. This really began in Place Matters. We really believe in that work. And so that Arnold Elementary and the library and the rec center, all in one, we committed to a $30,000 gift to make sure that that happened in Air Park. And again, if you look at the maps, you'll see that that's an area where those investments are especially important. Books for babies, little things like distributing books to moms who are either pregnant or have had babies. And we made sure that those were included in Spanish, Arabic, Korean, or Vietnamese. Here's the group that Marilyn has featured there. But also, this was the work of an East High student. She was a sophomore at the time. Maybe some of you have met her. She's right there to Marilyn's left. And we want to support those great ideas coming from our youngest citizens as well. And so this was a great project that's really increasing the opportunity for literacy and human connection between the mother and the baby. Now we're going to hear about investments from John Thompson, our Treasurer.
Very good. I just have this one slide to show you here.
It's a heck of a slide, though, John.
Yes, it is. Okay, if you look at it, you can see stock returns and bond returns and CHE's returns going back to the year 2000. A takeaway from this, a couple of them, that these exposures have served the endowment well. They've provided nice returns historically. But those returns aren't linear. There's some volatility around the returns. And generally positive, but you can see a few years, 2002, 2008, and then this most recent year where the stock market's been lower than normal. But that's a, lower than normal, but that's a normal course of event going back years and years that there is some volatility around this. This last year, we had volatility in both stocks and bonds that was negative, primarily driven by a root cause being inflation, which impacts both stocks and bonds. So we had a, the stock market down about 19.4%, bonds 13.1%. And with the endowment's exposure of about 60% stocks and 40% other investments, including fixed income, the return of the endowment was 16.5% or right in between there, kind of where you'd expect. Certainly not a good answer for a single year, but longer term, it's been good to have these investments, just one year where it's pulled down a bit. So with that, pass it off to Russ.
Hi, again, I'm Russ Gronewald. I'm the Vice Chair. But I'm also on the Investment and Finance Committee with John. And one of the main things that that committee does is determine what are the funds available for grants in the future. And so by policy, CHE funds need to maintain a purchasing power similar to when it was originally established, that $38 million. So we do that by applying some inflation factors to that $38 million and saying, "Here's the amount of money. Here's the target of where our funds should be today." And for 25 years, that's worked just fine. And we've always been able to have the funds available to do the funding that was requested and give those numbers back to the Funding Committee. This past year, because of both inflation and the returns simultaneously being unfavorable, we've not been able to hit that funding mark or that target that we typically have had. And so we've made the very difficult decision to say, "We're not going to be able to hold a spring round of funding grants." And that's mainly because we feel like we have a real first commitment to those existing grants that we have out there that have ongoing funding needs. We've already made those commitments, about $3 million over the next couple of years. We want to make sure that there are funds available for those. Should everything turn around, we can turn that policy around as well. But it's been our sense that both on a current basis and a long-term basis, we need to have that funding, that purchasing power available. And right now, the best thing that we can do is postpone or suspend the spring funding round. That's probably the biggest decision and the toughest decision that we've had. And didn't know if you had any questions about that before I said that.
Questions or comments? Is this the first time you've had to suspend?
It is.
In the history?
Yep.
We do give ourselves a range. You know, it's not like it has to be right there. We allow for that volatility, but...
Certainly understand. Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, Sandra?
Councilwoman Washington?
Do you have a forecast for when you might be able to open the next round?
John tells me exactly where the stock market's going. No, we don't have a forecast. Our sense, though, I mean, we have every intent of going through the fall round of funding. I don't, you know, if something turned around quickly, we could reconvene and do something again this summer. But right now, the intent is to look towards the fall round. We're doing a reforecast every month to every quarter right now. And again, should inflation come down, yeah, we'll take a shot at it.
Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, what's the range that you usually funded with per year? How much?
Of new money, usually in that $1.5 to $2 million. But we have, of course, a lot of previous obligations that would be added on top of that. So right now, we still have $3 million worth of obligation. So it's not like we're not funding at all. It's just the new part that's been suspended.
Other questions? Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Now I'll return to what my original presentation was to be with you, which is just to give a couple of high-level updates on some projects that are of major interest to perhaps you, to us certainly, and to the community. So we did issue last year a new Place Matters report. We spent a lot of time talking about that. And we're actually, right now, working with the Health Department on Place Matters 5.0. And so that will probably, you'll probably see that later this fall. But what we did add into this map were some things that we felt were pretty compelling. One was around the issue of older adults and our growing older adult population. You'll see by this map that the number of older adults is growing. They're going to start influencing a lot of things about our city. And so we wanted to make sure that that was an issue that was at the forefront. We did also have a public community conversation about that, which garnered a lot of interest. And if you have a chance to see that, those are posted on our website. A lot of people interested in talking about the topic of our aging population. We also included a couple of maps about rental rates, looking at where rentals are growing most quickly. Probably the one thing I will point out is on the right graph there, you'll see the orange areas. That's where most of the, the majority of homes are changing from owner to rental. And of course, you'll see in the core of the community, a lot of those are already rental, so you won't see it there. But you'll start to see this concentric circle around the downtown where there's a lot more homes that are becoming rentals. That's not necessarily, I'm not saying that's a good or a bad thing, but it certainly speaks to understanding that many families are renting or that transciency of families moving from neighborhood to neighborhood and not building equity, those kinds of things. It does come into play. So those were the new maps we had added in this particular issue of Place Matters. We continue to go out and speak about Place Matters. There's an incredible interest. It's kind of amazing to me how many people are still wanting to hear about the maps. And I think it's because they're very personal. You know, your place in the community is very personal. And so people relate to them very easy. A lot of people are using them in planning, a lot of people are using them in their funding priorities, not only us. And as I mentioned, we are working on our, with the Health Department on the latest collaboration. I wanted to give you an update. Marilyn mentioned a couple of our legacy projects. And these are projects that we invest not only deeply in terms of finances, but we're also at the table, so to speak. We're bringing the coalitions together. We're identifying people who we believe can work collaboratively around really tough problems. One of them is the Healthy Food Access Project, the Lincoln Fresh Truck, which is probably the most visible part of that. But some of the numbers are pretty astounding. 261 tons of fresh produce have been distributed through that little window in that truck. That's a pretty amazing number when you think about people needing healthy food, being able to put that out there. Now, we're in conversations with the food bank about the need for a bigger truck. And so we'll work and continue on that. But also, part of that was the district, was the building of a healthy food kitchen at Community Action in order to put healthy food into our Head Starts and to other childcare facilities. And you'll see here, amazing numbers, 2.2, almost 2.2 million meals have come out of that kitchen to serve Head Starts. So we're really proud and we believe that we're seeing some movement in terms of the commitment to healthy food. And I think that's incredibly important if we're going to have a healthier community. Another one is the Schroder Park Wellness Campus. Of course, Marilyn mentioned this as well, but we're seeing more and more things happen there. Sometimes people finding their way, developing that as a hub takes some time, but we are certainly seeing it. And here's just a few things that we know are going on there. Code drives and Halloween parties, family nutrition classes, other kinds of trainings are going on, just fun activities on weekdays and weekends, skateboarding. I mean, beginning to see this as really a hub for the neighborhood. And I think that's exciting. Before, it was very underutilized. And we really believe it's starting to serve the purpose of human connection and outdoor play for a lot of the neighborhood and education as well. Cultural Centers of Lincoln, many of you have heard about this project. We convened this group about three years ago. We believe that this is an important project to maintain the strength of the cultural centers, but also to really respect the ongoing diversity and growing diversity in our community. So what we know, they are looking toward working on is having a welcome center there and also putting the Asian community in Cultural Center and El Centro, not co-locating them, but in having them their own space in this building. But at the same time, we are really hoping for a really high-quality early childhood center in that facility, not just a food distribution, but a healthy food distribution center, a senior center, health and mental health services, a learning kitchen, a community celebration area, a play area, partner spaces, lots of things. And I think, for me, this is not just about providing services. This is about celebrating culture and diversity and all of the things, the food, the art, the music, all of the things that can happen in that regard. So you'll be hearing more about this. I know they received some ARPA funding and they're in the middle of a capital campaign. But we do believe that strengthening our cultural centers is a really important thing for our community. One of the reasons, of course, is because you'll notice this graph right now, in about 2020, about 20% of our population is people of color. But if we go forward just 30 years, you'll see it's over a third. So this is a trend that is very important for us to acknowledge right now and to take advantage of this momentum that we have in order to celebrate this growing diversity. I think I've mentioned to you before, the number of people living in poverty, and this is a map from our Place Matters, but you'll see some of that is concentrated in our core by virtue of the fact that some people in less poverty are located on the edges. But that does affect life expectancy, as we know, about a 10% life expectancy when we really look at all of those factors combined. And so it is important that this particular center be located right in the heart of where we need it most. And of course, that's what we're looking at on the Cushman property. I also wanted to mention one other project that we're working. It's called the ACES Institute. It's called Adverse Childhood Experiences. Essentially, what we are partnering with the Child Advocacy Center to build an ACES Institute. And it would have three purposes. The purposes would be to educate the community about adverse childhood experiences, about investing in early brains, in young brains, making sure that they're, I can say it non-scientifically, wired properly so that they can go on to live healthy and thriving lives. The second would be for them to work specifically with people and organizations that serve young children. So they could go out and provide training to certainly child cares, but also perhaps pediatricians, teachers, child cares, all of the kinds of things that may need more information about what they can do to wire that brain in the best possible way. And then it would also serve a role in working with very difficult cases, kids who have unfortunately had a very high number of ACES and need that specialized care. So right now, we are in the planning phase. We have funded a planning phase for Child Advocacy to go out and look at best practices for this kind of project across the country. And they have been going places throughout the United States looking for the very best project. They've assembled a very, great, including Marilyn and others, a very strong advisory team here in Lincoln. And I would expect, and they've just hired their first ACES Director. So these are the kind of projects that excite me. You know, you know it's necessary, but when it starts really becoming a thing, you know that it's really happening. I get really excited about the promise of what it could do in our community. And I just want to provide some things, in terms of some other things we try to give back. Certainly, we wanted to recognize folks who, especially nonprofit community, who worked so hard during the pandemic, food, distributing, personal protection, making sure the housing, the rental assistance, all of those things. So we basically just had a party and we celebrated them. It was great. People said, we said, "There's no meetings, there's no presentations, there will be some adult beverages, and we will just have a celebration." And people just very much enjoyed being able to do that. We also are sponsoring right now a project called Thrive. And Thrive is taking the organizations whom we fund and then bringing their leaders together and building their capacity around being able to rely on each other, being able to create connections. Their jobs are very difficult. And we want to be able for them to know that there are other people in the community that are facing the same struggles of never quite knowing where money is coming from, never quite being able to keep up their workforce, losing people. We bring them together, give them food, and really bring in national speakers with the assistance of one of our trustees, Priti Banzel, to talk about really taking care of yourself, taking care of your staff, and really learning to bring some joy back into their work. And so we've had six, we will have six sessions with them. We just finished the fifth, in which we had a National MacArthur Fellow come and talk to them and really made them, I think, feel like, you know, the work you're doing is incredibly valuable. And we also have community conversations. We had one around baby boomers turning 75. Um, we had one around baby boomers turning 75. That was important for us. We also had one about disparities in youth sports, which gathered a huge amount of interest. And we just finished one on diversity in the healthcare workforce, which also was very, very popular. So we're always excited to get people talking about issues and being able to share, um, the important work that so many folks are doing. I wanna, we want to finish our, um, our time with you by hearing from Eric, our secretary.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you today. Eric Buchanan, uh, this is, so let me start by saying that, uh, this is my last year on the board.
Don't remind us, that's okay.
Well, I guess that's true, last year on the board. But, um, but didn't want to say that, uh, of all the experiences that I've had in, in board service, that the, uh, time on the CHE has been, uh, some of the most gratifying. Um, not only for what I've learned and understood about the community that I did not know before, but also because of the, uh, quality and commitment of our staff and our volunteer leadership. As you can see, these are really wonderful people and, and very engaged. Um, uh, I'm, I'm also greatly appreciative. You've seen that run through the presentation of CHE's commitment to using data to inform its decision-making and its thinking. And, uh, against all that backdrop, we entered into some of the work that we've done around our, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion. And Lori mentioned that we had an officer. We did some work during the pandemic, just amongst the board, really informally, but now have transitioned that into a more formal process. We're going to meet quarterly by Zoom and have, uh, uh, interesting topics for the board to engage in. Um, and then, uh, uh, as Lori also mentioned, uh, we did instituted policy. Um, and that policy really, um, in, in many ways was things that CHE has already doing, but, uh, wanted to create some intentionality around that, um, and, and codify that in a way that, uh, it was clear what we, what our intentions were and what we, um, had intended to do. Uh, I think, I think the last thing I would say is I just want to double back to the maps and the importance of, uh, that investment, um, also the partnership with the Health Department to be able to bring that together. It's really been informative and, and, uh, I think, uh, as we were to look around the country, we could probably not see as many communities out there that are using that kind of information to do the things that, uh, they know would be important to make this, uh, the healthiest, uh, community in the nation. So with that all closed, thank you.
Um, I would just like to close by saying how grateful again we are for your support. I know some of you, um, may not be running again. Um, I know some of you are in the middle of campaigns. Some of you will continue during this tenure in your service, but I know that it is not easy work. And, um, my parents served a combined 70 years in elected office, so I saw it firsthand. It is not easy, but, um, we're grateful that you would, um, do this. We're grateful for your support, always equipping our board with fantastic trustees and people who give back so willingly. And I'm grateful for that and, um, as I am for your, your support and your guidance and wisdom that you offer us. So, thank you. And it, with that, we'll take any questions. Anyone here can, can take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Lori, and thank you to your board and, and, um, staff that are here today. And I will open it up to questions.
Can I say one more thing? I do want to introduce you to Morgan. Morgan Humannick is our administrative officer and she's bending over.
Morgan, she, Morgan is amazing.
I have for two years. I want to make sure they could see you.
Heard before us a couple of times.
Yeah, Morgan is two years. So I just want, she's here with us today. I wanted to introduce you.
I will have to say, I had the pleasure of working with Morgan when I was on the Neighbor Works Lincoln Board. So I'm so glad to still be able to, to work with her. So thank you, Morgan, for everything that you do. I'm so glad to see you around. It's grateful. Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
Yeah, I was interested in the ACES Institute and just wanted to know what the, who, where is this happening? What, you know, who are the national leaders? Where are you going to find out more information?
Um, we're going a number of places. Uh, we've had staff and of course the staff from, from, uh, Child Advocacy has traveled, um, to Florida, um, has gone to Des Moines, um, has tripped to California, um, one to Arizona. I think there's five altogether. And everyone's a little different. Everyone has a different focus group, uh, or focus, um, population they're working with, but they're garnering some really important, not only connections, but some great information. And they will come, bring that back and now they're using it to create what's right for Lincoln.
Really exciting. Thank you for sharing that. And I had another question about the Thrive, um, program. And I didn't hear the population, who was the, was it like nonprofit leaders or leaders in general or city leaders?
We started with, um, the leaders from the organizations of projects we fund. So right now we have, you know, um, I'm trying to, I think there was 30 people who were invited to attend. Not all of them could, but, um, we've been coming together every other month and having speakers, learning about, you know, skills like active listening and, and, but also about self-care, um, really trying to, connecting, how to connect with people. I mean, it's been a very fascinating thing. And what's interesting is even though these folks work in the same space, a lot of them didn't know each other until this time. And so now they've gained this new, um, this new set of support for their work. And, um, so yeah, much credit to Preeti Banzal for helping us, uh, secure speakers and facilitating some of that work.
I think that's such important work. They're in the trenches doing the work and, and whatever support we can provide to them is so important. Thank you.
Great questions. And before I let Councilwoman Suarez off the hook, I just have to, I would be remiss not to say, I first met, um, Councilwoman Suarez at Everett when she was principal and, uh, Rotarian, reading books, but she was the brainchild of, uh, Lincoln littles and, and with others. I know there was a big team, but so grateful to have her, um, steer that and start that. And when I know Eric Buchanan now is very instrumental. And thank you for your service to, um, Lincoln littles and beyond through your work. And I'm, uh, pleased to serve with you as a early childhood champion. Um, but we have champions in the room and I get so, and Marilyn Moore. But I get so excited when I, as the council knows, when we talk about this because it is so important. And, and so I would be remiss not to thank and recognize, um, those in the room that, and beyond, so.
Well, and along the same, the Thrive concept, we just funded a position at Lincoln littles or in combination with the, um, Buffett Foundation and, um,
Yes.
and Lincoln Commu-, no, Woods Charitable Fund.
Yes, I read that.
In order to support early childcare workers, um, to, to help support them and the difficult job that they have. So.
Thank you for that, yes.
We're excited about that. Keeping people in that important, important space.
Yes, we're so grateful for that. I did read that, so thanks to all of you, so grateful. Councilman McGinnis?
Well, um, as one that's been around for a while, remembering the fun days when we were going through the sale of Lincoln General and forming the Community Health Endowment. I think it's gotten to be a very dynamic, um, program. And I want to thank you for doing most of that and leading that all these years because you've done a great job and where we are today is just outstanding. I would have never seen it, uh, at, at that point. Didn't seem like we would ever get to a point like this. And I, I think you got to be really proud of that. But having a great board too, helps a lot and having the support of the community, I think. But so, thank you and thank you to your board.
Very good. Other questions or comments? Councilwoman Washington?
I'm just amazed at the wonderful work you do. I'm not like surprised by it and I love Place Matters. Uh, I have multiple, I have every year that produced like at my fingertips. So thank you for that. And I'm, there's so many, I mean, certainly, uh, Councilwoman Suarez mentioned Thrive, so I won't, uh, mention ACES, so I won't go and work on, and ask about that. But I'm just curious, um, are you looking for more topics for community conversations?
We are always looking for. You know, but I'll tell you, our next couple, the next one is around mentoring, um, the whole idea of mentoring. Um, we, uh, and then the following one is, help me, environmental justice?
I have a few different ideas though.
Environmental justice. We want to talk about water. We want to talk about housing. We want to talk about lead. We want to talk about climate change, um, floodplains, you know, all the things that.
Ouch, ouch.
No, well.
Oh, no.
I just turn on the mic and it takes care of itself. Um, you know, I mean, I think that those are the kinds of things that, that we're hoping. Maybe that's the one we're having the EBI can, I get, I get it mixed up. But I know the next, the next, the next community conversation is around mentoring. Um, we'll probably have another one also to release the findings of our youth sports, um, work, uh, survey that we recently completed. We just met, as I mentioned, with the public schools this morning and, and it has a lot of really strong and I think incredibly promising recommendations in it that could maybe help level the playing field in that regard.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Councilman Beckus?
Uh, yes. Um, so what's next? So we have, I, I'm thrilled to, to hear about the, um, the, the general initiatives of the funding priorities going forward. But I've always thought that the true, the truest beauty of CHE has been its ability to convene, its ability to look at issues from a high level and pull in partnerships throughout a community, uh, and its ability to then offer a carrot to make those things actually happen. We also have a carrot, so I'm always interested to know not only the things that are going on now, but what's next in terms of, are there issues that you think that the pandemic will create problems in the city of Lincoln that we ought to be paying attention to now? Are there holes in the fabric of our safety net system that we should be paying attention to now? Are there things that we can counteract to do those things? I want, I always want CHE and its board to look at us also, um, as a government entity, as your partner, in making sure that we can also attack the work that each of you do through the work that we do as well. So, uh, maybe this is more rhetorical than anything, but I'm always interested to know what's next because if there's anything I know about Lori Seibel is that if she's not thinking five years down the road, then.
Well, I mean, we have four projects going on right now. I think the ACES Institute is important. It's not there yet. We're, we're getting it there. Um, the Belmont Initiative, we're just on the front end of, which I think is incredibly important. The Cultural Centers Collaborative, which, um, i- is something that I believe in. Um, and, and I hope this next year or so will show that the strength is there to make that work. I think it could be a game changer in a lot of ways for Lincoln. And then I think, um, fourth, the issue around youth sports, I think is really, um, an important topic to have where it's on the front end. So they're all in kind of different phases. And of course, well, there's only 3.5 of us plus a great board, so we have to kind of measure these things out a little bit. But, um, I do think that all of those are, you know, potentially could make huge impact in the community. And maybe the board has some other ideas.
Or has the hardship of the pandemic torn any new holes in our safety net in our community that we need to be paying attention to? Have you seen any of that?
Oh, I absolutely think mental health is an absolute issue. It's a tough thing because, um, we get a lot of requests to hire mental health therapists. There aren't a lot to hire. So this is why the topic of, I think, things like peers and, which we have funded for a long time, um, support groups, um, mentoring, which we're funding right now. All of those things are going to have to be add-ons to our mental health, um, system because there just aren't enough mental health professionals to go around. And so we have to begin to look at how we can use some of those other things. And so we're, we're adding, adding those elements to our priorities, I think are really important.
Councilman Bowers?
I just wanted to add a comment to what, uh, Lori said about adding on peers and supports to, you know, the mental health system and mental health, uh, therapists. I think folks tend to use the word mental health therapist as a catch-all and there's such confusion about what a scope of practice is for a mental health therapist, right? If you come to me for therapist and that creates like a pa- a patient-client relationship and adds a, uh, maybe a higher level of care than what would be needed from, uh, uh, supporting with things like with peer support workers. And, um, I think that's a really important piece that our community thinks about when we talk about mental health services. And it doesn't always necessarily have to be a therapist providing mental health support, just like we don't have, uh, 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 internal medicine doctors providing medical care. There's nurses and there's a whole bunch of, uh, uh, partner professions. And so I think it's important that, um, that's a really good point that we don't ever let, let up on. That's kind of a little bit of a ramble, but it's something that I feel really passionate about that. Therapists tend to be the, the catch-all phrase for everything when there's so many other things that we can do to help support residents, uh, with dollars and, um, with positions and, um, in terms of support. It's not very articulate, but.
Thank you, Councilman Bowers. Any other questions or comments? I would just like to, uh, echo what Councilman McGinnis said. I was also around, now we're going to reveal our age, um, when the Community Health Endowment was started. I was, um, a staffer in the Lincoln Mayor's Office in 1999 and, uh, watched Lori, uh, uh, build this empire and it is, and we're, it is. And I mean that in the most positive way. Um, she's stuck with us for so many years. And I don't know where Lincoln would be without Lori Seibel, this board. And I know that it's rotated so much talent and expertise over the years. But we're so grateful and so fortunate to have her leadership, great staff with Morgan and many others, and to have your time and your talent shared because Lincoln would not be the same without these grants and this money that is distributed. And it was not an easy road, especially in the beginning. And some of us watched that and it was a little painful, um, but it was really important and it ended up as it should. So gratitude from personally and professionally. Um, it's been a dream to watch come true. And my district, and I know my colleagues get weary of me saying this, but so many of these projects are happening in Northwest Lincoln that I represent and I'm so proud and so grateful. And because of Lori, I, I went out to the, um, Fresh Start Kitchen at Community Action and when Bi-See was the director and she said, Lori Seibel made sure I got you out here. And then I went out to Lutheran Family Services and we met at Morning Hope and the director, um, his name just went, blah. Thank you.
At Morning Hope, Carly?
Yeah, not Carly, but the, um, Lutheran Family Services gentleman. Anyway, I'm in Rotary with him and he said. Yeah, I got out there and he said, Lori Seibel made sure I got you out here. And then I went somewhere else, um, to tour, um, something you had funded. And they said, Lori Seibel made sure I got you out here. So, and I know you all know that, but, um, you know, don't retire anytime soon, Lori, is all I'm saying. So, uh, the Place Matters, you know, I must have seen that last presentation at four different groups that I belong to. Every time I learned something new and I don't think you can see it enough. So I'm so excited to see the next one in progress. So enough of my rambling, but I just, I hope that you can feel the gratitude from, and gratefulness from the council and the support. And I, I wish there were more we could do. Um, so thank you for the great presentation. We appreciate your time. And, um, if there's no further questions, we have your information. And if you'd like to close, you're welcome to do that.
Just thank you and again, great thanks to great people. Tom Beckus being a formal board member as well.
Right, yeah.
Um, and so I just ask for you to continue to be so thoughtful in appointing people to, to the board because it is, it is a, um, um, it's a working board. And I, and the, and having that expertise and wisdom around the table is just so important to me. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Moore.